I see. So we'll get started here in a few seconds. Everybody can glance up on the screen there or seeing hearings. For public hearing proceedings, excuse me. But anyway, let's stand up and say congratulations. Congratulations to the United States of America, to the Republic of San Francisco, one nation under God, the universal, the religion of the United States. Okay, so I'll do some introductions here what's happening. Tonight is October 7th, 2021. We're in the Bonner County Planning and Building Commission Conference Room, first floor, 1500 Highway 2, San Antonio. They have the roll call from the left, please.
Commissioner Lawson.
Commissioner Frankenbach.
Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Bailey has corn. Are there any? Excuse me. I've got bad glasses, so I have a little problem tonight. We have a corn. And are there any announcements? Are there any changes in the agenda? We will go to the consultant agenda. Did everybody have a chance to read the minutes? Sixty? Yeah. So up on the board is our evening's proceedings. We're live on TV and on the internet, so if everybody would watch their language, be courteous to their neighbor. So it's 5:32. Our first file is AM 0017-21 and CC 0030-21. Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Zone Change. Gary and Rose Reed are requesting a Comprehensive Plan Map change. Prime AF to AF. Prime AF to AF and a zone change from AF 20 to AF 10 on 76.8 acres. Property is on AF 20. Project is located on East Side Road in Section 9, Township 57 North, Range 4 West, Boise Meridian. Are there any conflicts of interest? May I present the file, please? Yes, ma'am. Oh, does anybody need any visual aids during hearing? Okay. Commissioners, members of the public, Daniel Riff for the Record, planning staff. Sorry, we're here to look at the two-part application for a Comprehensive Plan Amendment and for a Zone Change. We're going to start off with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment first. Napkin is requesting a Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment from a prime ag forestry land to an ag forestry land designation. A little background on the parcel. It is a residential parcel. It is unplanted. It contains almost 77 acres. The current zoning is AF 20 and the conplan designation is prime ag forest land. Parcel is accessed off East Side Road, which is a county ground that maintains easement in Priest River. So a little background on the parcel itself. It does contain map slopes. It does have contained map wetland and also has a stream. On two soils are found on there. Both are non-prime farmlands. The services available on the property are an individual well, individual septic system. Fire suppressions provided by West Ponderey Fire District, ours provided by, excuse me, Vista Utilities and School District Bonner 83. So then my, we take a look at the parcel itself, compare the existing conplan designation to what Napkin's seeking for it and how it's appropriate. So we find, based on the conplan designation, that the prime ag forest land is designed to preserve productive farm and ranch land and timberland to promote its important economic and environmental contributions to the county. This area may have a range of road systems serving it and is generally served by individual sewer and water systems. These areas generally have prime agricultural soils and soils of, right, soils of recognized state importance and enacted farm and ranch operation. Proposed designation they're seeking is the Ag Forest Designation, which is recognized where areas where steeper slopes prevail that are 30% greater and transportation is provided by private roads or US Forest Service or state roads. Urban services are not available and residential development challenges are present due to slow or soil conditions, hazard areas, and lack police or fire services. So the Comprehensive Plan Amendment finding facts on this parcel. Steeper slopes prevail. They don't on this parcel, but they do have slopes that range anywhere from 20 to 30%. It is accessed by a private Bonner County easement that's maintained. Urban services are not available, but does have an individual well and septic. There are challenges to this parcel as far as development goes, and there are mercy services available. So in conclusion, for the comprehensive plan portion of this, the proposal is in accord with the following elements of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. Conclusion 2, parcel was reviewed for compliance with Title 12 Bonner County Revised Code and is found to be in compliance. In conclusion 3, the proposal is in accord with the Ag Forest Use Designation. Moving on to the zone change. Napkin is requesting a zone change from Ag Forest 20 to Ag Forest 10 for the purposes of creating three new parcels from the current 76 acres. This request would also allow an increase in density, go from the potential of creating three lots to potentially creating seven lots. Correct, the request still maintains the Ag Forest Designation. So the current zoning is AF 20 that we talked about earlier. The next couple of slides you're going to see the comparison, so I'm not going to read all this for you exactly. This is the proposed zoning to go to AF 10. And as we compare these two side by side, the parcel or the review, we see AF 20 on the left-hand side for the standards of review for prime ag soils. This property does not have any prime ag soils. It is characterized by agricultural forestry uses. It still could be, yes. Does it have limited services? It does not. Characterized by slopes steeper than 30%, no. Absent or limited substandard road system? No, the easement is East Side Road, which is maintained by the Bonner County Road and Bridge Department. Large tracts of land may be devoted to ag forest production? Yes. So looking at the designation that Napkin wants is the AF 10 standard and finding if this land is appropriately more appropriate used as an AF 10 as a 20, it fits into these criteria, which should not feature prime ag soils. And we already admitted it does not, based on the state's standards. Where agricultural forestry pursuits remain viable, they can still pursue those with this zone change. Within or adjacent to an area of city impact, it is not. The lands are forward to fire protection. It is access to standard roads. It does have access to standard roads besides the side road, and there are other services available for the property. These were the agencies that were routed for comments. Panhandle Health District replied. We recommend that Napkin contact HD to septic feasibility of the proposed lots. I know fishing game had a four-page letter to sum it up in a brief sentence, well down to the wildlife may be displaced, although likely still use available corridors through the section for travel and migration. DQ, same thing, four-page letter, well down to recommends consideration be given to design and implementations of the roads, vegetative boughs and the wetlands that are found on the property. All other agencies did not reply. We received a list of 15 signatures submitted opposing the zone change on September 30th, but there was no reason as to why they opposed it. So in conclusion, the proposal is in accord with the following elements of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. The proposal was reviewed for compliance with Title 12 Bonner County Revised Code and was found to be in compliance. Proposal is in accord with purposes of Ag Forest 10 zone designation, provided by Chapter 3 Title 12 Bonner County Revised Code. Staff recommends approval on both requests. This concludes my presentation. Questions? Any questions to staff this morning? You have the project representative, Deuce yourself.
Jamie Adderall for the Record, please. Travis Haller, one of the lead professional land surveyors at 303 Church Street in San Point.
Thank you again, I'm here to the planning department, thank you commissioners. We're here today to do a simple zone change, because it's about as simple a zone change as you can get from the Ag Forest 20 to the Ag Forest 10. The pursuits are still ag forest. Those don't change. And really, it comes down to, as I'll show, it really comes down to what lies in the county code for those designations. So. So just a brief overview. The property is located pretty much right back in the middle between Priest River and Priest Lake along East Side Road. There we go. Comp land use, this is what is the big picture for everything. And a few things to point out here is we have the rural residential, and that's five to 10 acres. And we also have prime ag forest land, and that's what we currently are. 20 acre minimums here or greater. But we have a lot of these smaller parcels, you know, within the Ag Forest 20. And it just goes to show you that the, this is more of a blanket zoning that was used to zone it currently. And if we take a deeper look into it, it actually needs the Ag Forest 10 a lot better with the way the code reads. The zoning, same thing. You have the Ag Forest 20. Sorry. The previous slide was the conplan, which is the prime ag forest versus the ag forest land. I apologize for that. But you can see the zoning, same thing, the same smaller parcels. Parcels that are under 20, 20 acres still have the blanket, the Ag Forest 20. We have a few right down here by the site. These are 20, so that's as small as currently will be allowed. These are all five, a few under five. These are rule, this is Rule 10 area, and you can see we have some fives over there. So things have been missed, obviously. But you know, unless there's a detailed look at each individual lot, like we're doing today, this is what we see all the time. Is there something wrong with that? No. But can we get better with what's in place in county code? Yes. And that's why we're here today. The code straight from the Revised Code, Chapter 12-322. We talk about the Ag Forest District and what it's suited for. Daniel did a great job with that. And down here, it talks about the Ag Forest 20 in areas designated as prime ag forest land in the conplan, which it is. However, it's designated that features prime ag soils characterized by ag and forestry uses. We're not changing that. Areas where one or more of the following apply. Daniel hit, great on this. I'm reiterating it. Limited services characterized by slopes steeper than 30%, steeper than 30%. Note that. And where access may be absent or limited to substandard roads, as Daniel said, this is the county maintained road. So how does that buy into what we want to do? Well, the topography, we have about 20% slopes. The contours are 40-foot contours, quick math, 20% slope, 20%. The subject site does not contain slopes over 30% as well as the soils map, which is the big one. If the conplan has it as prime ag forest, we're wanting to go to ag forest. And really, everything in yellow is what's considered by the Natural Resource Conservation Service, the Web Soil Survey, which is what is used to designate prime versus not prime far ag soils. Everything in yellow is prime ag forest. If drained, Bonner's still low, that's the quintessential. And you can see the line work here. These are all the different soil types. Daniel said there was two, absolutely correct. You have 10 and 35 here, and the outline of the parcel, we are close to prime, but there are no prime ag soils on this property. Again, that lends us to, if we go back to the actual county code right there, it talks about having prime ag soils if we don't. AF 10 in areas designated as ag forest land that do not feature prime ag soils, but where the ag forest, ag forestry pursuits are still viable. We don't meet the 30% slopes. We've seen this before on other rezon cases where those are the two biggest hurdles that distinguish the Ag Forest 20 from the Ag Forest 10. So if we get past the slopes, you look at the soils. I have the same sunray as Daniel. It's what we look at. It's what our job is. And I have mine color-coded, the soils for each one, Ag Forest 20 versus Ag Forest 10. The green is yes, the red is no. Slopes, access, the lot sizes. We have the lot sizes here. It refers to what's in the vicinity. Are we keeping with the surrounding lot sizes? Obviously, we don't want to throw in a bunch of 10s where there's a bunch of 40s around. That doesn't make any sense. But we saw there are smaller lots, you know, so, but there are larger lots, you know, above the 20. So that's why that's green. But real quick, simple color-coded little chart. We need Ag Forest 10 better because of the criteria set up by the Bonner County Revised Code. It's right there, plain and simple. So. Any questions?
When was that code revised?
Uh, sir, you know, wait. First of all, he's addressing your commission, not necessarily your folks.
Travis, prior to, oh wait, when was the designation?
So if you go back to the soil, soil map. So it looks like yellow outline. Yeah, there's, sure, you got this non-prime ag soils come in here and then it widens back.
West of the property is pretty much along East Side Road.
Correct, yeah. It looks like East Side for that stretches the dividing line.
Which is also the foothills, bottom of the slope.
Yeah, the double map should be.
So we, now going back to the conplan now. Which is that one, okay. So what's west of East Side Road appears to be more appropriately designated as that. The east side is questionable, but it's lacking. It seems like that whole stretch up above this property up to the north and then off to the northwest.
Absolutely, correct. Yeah, it's the foothills that really dictates the soil. Okay.
Any other questions? The dial will close, so that far we'll open it up. The public comment will do online first.
Nobody has their hand up. Yeah.
Go ahead, G. Name and address for the record.
Teresa Heisner, P.O. Box, hi. P.O. Box 2004, Priest River.
Need an address for.
3155 Peninsula.
Go ahead.
I want to oppose this for numerous reasons, one being the zoning. It is not zoned or, or AF 10. Yes, there are some smaller lots to the north, but that is that was due to the old zoning, and we all know it. Many of us bought out here in this area because there are larger tracts of land. And I think allowing one to do it opens the floodgate for others to do it, as we've seen in days past. The other huge problem is Peninsula Road, which will now be paved as it turns into East River all the way to Priest Lake. And Peninsula Road has turned into many Highway 57. It is a huge problem. People are doing in excess of 65 miles an hour. It's becoming a very unsafe road. So for those reasons, I oppose this rezon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else has it?
Okay, Elaine Savage?
Yes. Do I speak up?
Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Elaine Savage. My home address is 981 East Side Cut Off Room in Priest River. Good?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm usually in both blocks, too. And as I said, I live at 981 East Side Cut Off Room, and I have about 100, not myself personally, but 120 years experience with this area. At one time, that was ag primed because it was connected to another 80-acre parcel, and they farmed for many years there. My primary concern, of course, is the density and the very fact that why services are there, they're not provided well. At the bottom of the driveway to this place is a county road that you can hardly drive past in the spring when it, because they don't take care of it. We are last to get any plowing done, even though we're a bus route. We have a little grass fire in the midst of August, which panicked the whole neighborhood on the property just west between this property and my property. Grass fire, middle of August, 30 minutes for the fire department to respond. West Ponderey has another fire station over by the dumpster sites, but because of volunteers, they panicked. The sheriff's office is not real responsive to our area, hasn't been for years. But they did respond to the fire, but they couldn't do nothing. It was, you know, a great guy with a skid steer that solved that. But in 30 minutes, a lot can happen in that dry weather. So density brings a lot of problems, and I do have one question for you. Does a city charge, or does a county charge impacts fees? Okay, here's where a bigger problem exists than what's going on here. It's because we're, our taxes are going up to provide services, and nobody is paying for those except us, the taxpayer here. It's crazy. I don't understand why you wouldn't. The developer who's going to walk away with a lot of money is taking our tax dollars with him. That's personal opinion. The other concern I have is I have water rights on both sides of this property. Adjudicated water rights on Ranger Creek, where no one else can access that creek or do anything. It's for stock and irrigation. And then right below Lot 3 is my spring. I have a gravity head spring there that I've had since the 1930s. My family has. And it produces between 15 and 20 gallons a minute from the springs on that hillside. I can't lose that water, and the law allows me not to be, have that water messed with in any way, shape, or form. And the 15 or 20 gallons a minute came during the drought this year. So those springs on that side hill are very important, and I certainly don't relish the thought of a septic tank going in there. So the Panhandle Health District has concerns. I don't know that they have investigated that as far as what the water rights are that are connected to their property and how that affects their lot designations. And I don't know if they've researched how the wells are in that area, because wells in that area are hard to come by. And we don't get a lot of water there. So those are my concerns. I think identity, we're not prepared for it. It doesn't have a place in that bill. Thank you.
Okay.
Ryan, online. You can speak.
Ryan, you can speak. Name and address, please.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Ryan Bailey, I'm at 4646 East Side Road. And first off, I just wanted to say thank you, you folks, for putting this all together and allowing us to speak. Makes it very, a lot more convenient when we're actually not in town. Couple of points I wanted to make were the, the traffic increase, which will really be uh the 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 traffic increase, which will really be unavoidable. Uh, and it will have, I think we all know it's going to have obvious impact on the, some of those unimproved roads that are surrounding the area. Uh, I know it was spoke to a little bit earlier. I believe Teresa said it, um, you may as well change the name of the East Side Road to uh Highway fifty-seven East. It's it's getting worse uh day by day. Um, and as the seasons change, we don't seem to see it really slowing down, which is kind of strange. Um, there was one comment made earlier, I believe by, uh, it might have been Travis from the surveying company, uh citing some development uh challenges uh for this this, you know, chunk of land, for lack of a better term. Um, I've been out that way several times. I I understand there may be development challenges, however, uh in this day and age, uh that is not an argument. Um, those challenges, those hurdles are overcome uh quite simply. We've seen it uh actually on the other side of the Pondoree River with some development chain challenges. Um, and specifically the Dufrid Ridge. So the challenge, I I really don't think that is really a a topic that we can argue about. Um, I understand Mr. and Mrs. uh Reed, and I I think we all know what their their end goal or their end game is. Uh, when we looked at the comprehensive plan, I guess I will, my question to you folks on the board there would um, I know they want to change it from prime to uh AF ten. Why can we not just go AF twenty and leave it as it is? And that, those are my comments. Thank you again for taking the time.
Thank you. Anyone else to?
No one else with their hand up.
Okay, uh, Ken? It's uh S K A C E O, Sigal?
Do you want to speak?
Ken, would you like to speak?
I'm the neighbor.
Name and address for the record, please.
One oh nine seven five. One oh nine seven five, East Side Road.
Can you come up here, sir, and into microphone? They're not able to record you.
I'm the neighbor right here. Uh, when I moved in and bought about twenty years ago, I understood it's going to take twenty acres minimum. And I would like to keep it that way. Uh, we came to live in a rural environment. And I'm not sure why it should be changed. So I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mark Ashley?
Uh, my address is one zero nine seven three, Side Road, that's up there. I'm actually, this piece of property right here. And uh, wait. Right here. We won't care about fifteen years ago. Uh, when I bought it at that time, it was a zone for twenty acres only. We could make a one-time split at that time for families for ten, ten acres. And then after it got changed to twenty acres only. Those five acre parcels that you see to the north, they were annexed in there long before that. And uh, you know, I'm with Ken, I don't want to see more people up there. The roads are terrible in the spring. We've asked them to be taken care of. Nobody will take care of them. Uh, so when you get more people up there, um, the roads are going to be worse. I've got a grandson, daughter and son-in-law that live on our property. He's going to be going to school and there's going to be more traffic with that. It's going to make it more dangerous. Uh, I'm definitely opposed to it. I don't agree to the fact that they're allowed to do all this uh stuff on the property before it's even zoned with explosive work. There's been free blasts up there. I was an explosive expert at a time earlier in my life. Nobody in the neighborhood who's uh uh learned about that, but they've had three shots or they've shot. Uh, the guys that are doing the building over there are very rude to the people around the area that live there. Um, to me, it's ridiculous. If they want to do twenty acre parcels and keep it with the with the way it is now, I'm okay with that. But having it them able to blow it out to seven lots, seven more lots in there? We can't sustain that, but it doesn't work. And nobody that bought in that area wants it to work. And I think that petition, I believe, is fifteen, but that's actually thirty people. Fifteen families, forty people. Don't want it there, and that's the people living in that neighborhood. Anyway, I'm very opposed to it, and I speak, I know for the people that aren't here, that we do not want it. We're very opposed to it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, Brian Elfrum? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I'm at one zero eight zero eight, East Side Road, disappearing north. Uh, we bought about fifteen years ago. At that time, once again, it was twenty acres. You see, I'm minimum lot size, that was our understanding. Feel that there's, you know, rules for that, they should be followed. Once again, I'm with Mark, I I don't oppose the twenty acre parcels. That's that's what my understanding was of this zoning, so I I can't um be opposed to that. But to subdivide it into ten acre parcels, then claim that they're going to use it for lumber or something, we all know that's not the case. It's it's going to be sold in ten acre parcels for profit, so I oppose it. My wife opposes it, yeah. And uh these smaller parcels that are north of us, like Mark said, those were all done prior, years, years prior. Thank you.
Thank you. There's Lou?
I'm Lou Clark, and I live at one one two three two, East Side Road, mine. Right here. So I apologize, I wrote speech, I'm going to be erratic, but I'll try and make it quick.
We have three minutes.
Oh, thanks. Okay, I'm the one that collected the signatures and turned that in. And yes, I did not put a reason on it because I planned to be here tonight and to speak on behalf of myself and residents that are on that, neighbors that are on that signature sheet. So we strongly and adamantly oppose the change in zoning of this parcel from twenty acres to ten. We oppose this because as the application states, the applicant's application, it will allow for additional lots and an increase in density. That's what's, that's stated on the application. It also states that it will have minimal impact on the comprehensive plan and the adjoining parcels, which we dispute. All adjoining parcels are twenty plus acres and state land, as you've heard so far. In the owner's narrative to to his application, it says he intends to create three ten acre, ten acre lots for future residential properties. And admits that the land use in the area includes agriculture and forestry. Yes, this is what our rural area is. However, if the owner only wants three lots, why not stay within the current plan? Allow three twenty acre lots. The reason, as stated in his application, is if he he doesn't want three, he potentially wants seven, seven ten acre lots. Do the math. You realize that three to seven lots could add six to fourteen people. It could add six to fourteen vehicles, because no one moves to North Idaho with just one vehicle. Those two people and at least two vehicles. So why question minimal impact? Uh, the most noticeable impacts that we that we'll see and that we have seen is to the roads. East Side Road and Cut Off are the county maintained roads sometimes. Several areas of these roads become washboard, pitted potholes, particularly in front of this property due to a lack of culvert. The heavy equipment that's now utilizing uh being utilized at this property has only exacerbated this issue. An increase in traffic and density is not going to make this situation better for residents or for the county who maintains the road. Another impact it brings that uh this brings is recreation. The application says, allowing this change may increase the potential for recreational opportunities by allowing for more people in the area to access, access nearby state and federal lands, end of quote. We have seen a massive influx. Can I finish this paragraph?
Someone now like to yield their three minutes to her so she can finish? That hasn't spoken yet?
She can submit that as, you can submit that comment, that letter.
I would, I will do that.
Yeah, I think that's what she did. Oh, and she did, yeah.
No, I didn't, I submitted a list of that.
Yeah, we didn't get a letter, we just got it.
Okay. Uh, John Wyatt, is that correct? Do you?
I'm John.
Okay.
I live at three hundred, East Side Cut Off Road, which is right there. I've been there since nineteen eighty-four. Um, I don't know if anyone has looked at the water table in that area. There are a number of wells, and I've seen them go dry. And I pulled up a sampling of some of the wells that were drilled out that area. We've got one here, four hundred fifty feet deep, six gallons a minute. We've got a dry hole that was drilled by my neighbors. On the Savage property, they have a well that produces ten gallons a minute at over three hundred fifty feet deep. Here's another dry hole at four hundred forty feet deep. Here's another one, six gallons a minute. Here's another one, two hundred twenty-five feet deep at ten gallons a minute. I'm concerned with what additional houses are going to do to the water table in that area. Not to mention that East Side Road is very windy, very muddy in the spring. I do my best to avoid it. That's only going to transfer the traffic on other dirt county roads. I know they, the county just put a million dollar mile of blacktop going up here to Fox Creek. I can't help but wonder why and for whose convenience. We're talking about opportun, recreational opportunities for people to access nearby state and federal lands. This past summer, I am aware of about seven fires in the lands that you want to pack more people into. It's mentioned that there's going to be no impact on school or transportation facilities. That's wrong, because you're going to have more traffic and you're going to have more traffic on dirt roads that can't, that can't bear up under it. Not to mention, if it's not going to have any impact on our schools, then why every year or every other year, we're faced with luddies if numbers don't matter? There's no jobs in the Priest River area. Employment is horrendous. So you're going to bring more people in to compete with the the few jobs that are there. I I feel that this is incredibly nearsighted for a carpetbanger to come in from over on the west coast, make his his killing and then leave. I'm opposed.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience opposed would like to speak?
Hey, you should be able to talk.
Hi, this is Asia. I just had a comment that I didn't. Oh, sorry, uh, two nine seven, covered bridge loop, Blanchard, Idaho.
And what's your last name?
Williams.
Thank you.
I heard the lady mentioned that she had water rights that would be impacted, and I didn't see the response from staff if that was addressed. And if it wasn't addressed, it seems like that should be addressed because that could potentially affect that person's water rights. And I I didn't, I tried to see if I could see an answer to whether or not staff addressed that, but I didn't. So it's kind of a question for the staffing. Did you address whether her water rights would be impacted by increasing those lot sizes? Because it does look like we're looking at seven.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Asia.
Thank you.
Okay, is anybody in the audience, because we're going to move to people that are for? Uh, Pam Door? Is that right? Yes.
My name is Pam Door. I am one of the people who this goes through, are planning to live on the lot number two. I am retired, so is my husband. We have no children. We are not looking for jobs. We are looking to retire. The reason there's three lots is because we want to retire with our friends. We are putting in a small shop, small house. We are following all the rules and regulations. We are staying way far away from Ninja Creek, because just like all of you, we are going to maintain all the forestry and all the water that's there, and we love the animals. They come to visit every single day when we're there. So I am for it. I see some of the locals racing down the streets. We come in a car that sits really low. We had no problems getting up East Side Cut Off Road, no problems getting up. So um I'm for the park. And I feel like after going through all the paperwork and looking at all the rules and regulations that we fall into the zoning for agriculture, uh, Forest River ten.
Thank you.
Do you need my address? I don't have an address over here yet.
Yes, we do need this for the record.
Okay, it's one four oh four G Street Southeast, outer Washington. Door, D O R E. We are also moving for our own safety to get out of where we live.
Thank you. Uh, Rose Reed?
I didn't know I was signed up to speak.
You don't have to speak, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm just for the property.
Okay, so Judy Orski?
Karowski.
Karowski.
No, I I don't care to speak, thank you.
Jack Christie, would you like to speak?
No, thanks.
He was also for it. Gary Reed? He was all, would you like to speak, sir?
So I'll speak, but I didn't know we were signing up to speak, so.
No, not that. You don't have to.
You don't have to. So.
Okay.
Basically came to hear what people had to say, so.
All right, sir.
We're here.
Okay, so we're going to close, uh, public comment, we'll move to uh uh Travis would probably like to.
Yes.
Speak. You want Daniel or you speak first?
This is something that.
Do you have something to address? I don't think the water issue that she was asking about, we didn't, because that's.
Right, it's not part of it. So Daniel, for the record, that's not part of the criteria that's reviewed against the two zones.
Right, and one question.
Hang on, hang on. Excuse me. Yes, Director. So it's how we noticed the Department of Water Resources. If there was a problem, they'd tell us. So, yeah, we we noticed the Department of Water Resource in the application, uh, agency review. We received no.
Uh, agency review, we received no comments back from them. Occasionally we do. Yeah, so that's how we address the water issues. Thank you.
By anyone for staff? Brought up a few times of traffic. Was, uh, Road and Bridge? Did they get a notice of this?
They did.
And did they just any such to the comment back at all about traffic volumes on the roads or?
The only three comments I received was DQ, Panorh, and that's the last one, so.
There's nothing in the record that, that says what the traffic volume on each side of our road are.
They didn't respond with any comment. Any other questions, staff? Thank you.
Staff, salary, what do you associate? Um, just want to address some of the comments. Um, uh, first off, um, appreciate the comments. I, I mean, it shows that you guys care about where you live. Um, that's to say a lot, speak to a lot more than other areas. So thank you for your comments. Um, uh, I find a lot of them are concerns for things that um, are either opinion or aren't actually part of this application. Um, I will address the ones that I believe need to be addressed. Um, higher density was mentioned. Um, by creating three, three new lots, um, that's really not higher density. Yes, it's an increase in density, but that's not considered high density. Um, I would like to point out 20 acres versus 10 acres for retirees in traffic. Um, where I get what you guys are saying, however, this is not going to create what you guys think it's going to create. Um, uh, the roads, I'm hoping uh, that by adding more parcels to the road, that it gets looked at, that, you know, it does get addressed. Um, so these are things that happen. Dawn, I did call, uh, Road and Bridge. I asked, um, uh, not about the traffic, but I asked about the road condition itself. And, uh, Matt Holder, I, I asked, is this a substandard road or a standard road? That being part of the condition. And he said the fact that it's been county maintained then leads him to believe it's a s- a standard road. It's not substandard. However, by the comments we've heard, there needs to be addressed on the road. However, this isn't part of the application. This is part of the rezoning. Um, so, um, that, that goes with the impact fees too. Somebody had brought that up. I agree. Something needs to be done about it. I don't think we need to deny the rezon. What we need to do is address the zoning codes as it sits. But as it sits, we fall into Ag Forest 10 a lot better based on what the code says. That's our job. If we want to change that, we can change it, but we're at, we're, we're at, I see this all the time. Um, we will comply with all building codes, water. Those are your rights. They will not be impeded upon. Um, uh, if for some reason something happens, just like tomorrow something happens, property authorities get notified. So, um, as far as, um, the concern, love it, but, um, three new lots, uh, we're talking outside of that. These are just three new lots, 10 acres. We're not talking one acre lots. So I have.
Thank you. So we'll close the rebuttal. We'll open it up for commissioners, deliberations, and motion. Motion's have been changed. Uh, we have these in front of you, obviously, so. Yeah. Well, this, this year we bought property on East River Road. Yes, there's a lot of traffic there. However, county license plates, most of it was Washington. You know, Washington folks don't care about this in this county. Unfortunately, they, you know, we were run off the road twice. But, uh, I have smaller parcels in there. And that's farther up, down my patch, so. Thank you. But I did, I did drive these side road and it was a little, uh,
Yeah.
A couple of weeks ago. County's putting money in the East River Road. And you've done some more money in East Side Road too possibly next year, but.
I was asking about the volumes because county code, uh, the road standards use a volume standard for considering when a gravel road should be paved. And that would be looked into. But it's, it's not. There's other programs, cost sharing programs that county Road and Bridge uses to get things paid. And maybe it's that volume threshold. So I don't know where it is with volume on the road is in relation to that. But it, I don't recall it ever being triggered by a development. It's more attention to it. It's county responsibility. We've had subdivisions that have paved roads between private roads, between houses with it being built in hub and road system. Truly to serve that development. But to take care of a county road, I don't, there's nothing in code that could bring that about that I'm aware of. Unless it's shown to be an absolute mortified hazard, people falling off the road all the time, whatever. Yeah. So that's part of it.
That road's base is.
Commissioner, sir, where, where is this being realized right now? We've both. We're all aware of the road.
And it's not one of the standards for review.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's only for some.
Yeah, it's, um, for zone change, that's the, that's the hard part of zone change is, uh, practically a paper exercise. It doesn't immediately have impact. If then they apply for a subdivision of, if the zone goes through, that's when some of these things can be addressed. But uh, I, I wonder whether some of those triggers would be, would be met. I kind of doubt it. Takes, takes a lot of volume on a road. It would have to be at the max almost right now. Yeah, right. Right. I mean, this, for seven more lots to make 12. It's not even seven. Yeah. It's three. Or the load delay. Yeah. Cause right now it's, it could get, what is, could it get 76 acres? So you could get. Could be seven, it could be three, you know, three twenties. I, I have to say, I think, um, it's not as obvious to me that the proposed land use change is appropriate. Me, there are two kind of conflicting requirements that we have to consider. Ag Forest is pretty clear that it requires slopes over 30% in the Ag Forest zone. And, and this property basically doesn't have that. And then on the other side, there's the soil, prime ag soil, which if you look at the comp plan, the words that are used are in prime ag land use designation, they generally have primatic soils. And, and in my mind, generally in this context, is not a synonym for always. So probably more often than not, they have primatic soils, but there's a room to have prime ag designated land use without the primatic soils the way, the way the comp plan is written. And when I balance those, the slope requirement is pretty firm. It's pretty clear that Ag Forest is for steep slope areas over 30%. I don't think this property meets that criteria, my opinion. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'd support the land use change before we even get to that, that, I mean, the discussion of the zone change, but. I don't know what other people think, but. Well, it seems, I'm looking again at that, if there. No, it's land use, okay, but the, the soil map. Yeah. It's clear that, it's clear that it does not have primatic soil. Yeah. That's, that's clear. I'm not arguing that. Maybe because it's listed first in the language designation, prime ag forest. That's the paramount reason for it, which again, it curves west of here, west of the road, surely. And the latter area that part is prime for a century now. Yeah, what I'm suggesting is if you read the comp plan, I don't come away with the conclusion that primatic soils is the primary criteria. Because it says generally have primatic soils. Yeah. But on the other hand, it's quite clear that for Ag Forest, or to be Ag Forest, which is what we're looking to change into, it has to have slopes over 30%. Yeah. So, I mean, they're a little bit in conflict with each other, I realize, but, but, but the one slope requirement that's pretty clear in the Ag Forest description. It being taken as a whole, Ag Forest is for kind of more remote, steeper tops of mountains. That's kind of what I conclude. Yeah. Sort of generically, when I read the description of the Ag Forest land use category. So. The roads are poor in, in Ag Forest, which, uh, maybe this sits there, but actually this does fit the road. It's in the category of roads that would fit in prime. Thank you. Looking at the, what's on the screen, and the darker green is prime ag. The lighter green is ag, but I'm confused now because okay, so those are, I, yeah, confused by the lot parcel. Yes, yeah. There's areas such as at the very top of the picture, that green, there's a light green blob in the middle surrounded by dark green. I, I think that's all primatic there. I think what you're seeing is it's transparent. So you're seeing. Tree cover. Yeah, you're seeing the difference between where there are trees and where there are. Yeah, I think it's the tree cover. It's, it's, uh. Okay. I think it's all, I think it's all primatic. Because it typically, I, I'd be surprised if it followed those boundary lines. That's one of our comments historically is we just follow the section lines or property lines. Yes. Rather than looking at individual properties to determine what designation best fits the property. It's a real dilemma. Um, and those, that's some of the things we, we discuss and battle all the time. So in that whole stretch, it's all primatic, even though the USDA soil designation does not support that. But it, does it?
No, you're fine. I, I guess the way I read that sentence is it says primatic soils and
Well, there's and.
And active farms, right?
Right. Yeah, so. And are there active farms?
So it's, so it may not be primatic soils, but it's also not an active farm.
Yeah. And. I have a real problem with current land use being a factor in what the language designations, because it just, if somebody does something different and all of a sudden their land use designation.
No, I, I get it. I just, I'm, I get it.
So I don't give a lot of weight to that personally.
Okay, I just was asking the question.
Yeah, we're deliberating. Yeah, and the land use designations, most of them in the comp plan are called multi-passive. Yeah, well, there's a lot of, there's some room for everybody. Just the fact that, yeah, no one piece of property has at all. Um, and again, as we've said, this is what we deal with in a company and so, man, all the time is somewhere. How was it originally determined that that should be so upset or upset? It appeared to be pretty broad, broad, just following a property land and section. Obviously, it's not going to, every property is not going to absolutely fit love to those designations.
So when the soils report, the original report that was done by the federal government was done in 39. And it's basically been cut and pasted since then. And so they didn't sample every section, piece of ground. Parcel in. In downtown town, it's 39. Look, it almost reads all the same. Like a hydrologian, we're at 63 or 50,000 things. Reaching in the lot of old reports. So. So. Go ahead, question.
Question. Susan, any thoughts?
I can see it both ways. I'm more inclined to a 10, but for sure. I was continually hearing about speeding tra- traffic, which, you know, calls here uh, roads, all the county, that's a county maintained road. Putting three additional lots on there, it's not, it's a road more. Yes, already maintained by the county. I live on dirt road that's made, that's county maintained, it's got washboarding and potholes and I, I'm a uniformed woman who lived here with more vehicles.
And the Road and Bridge Director looks on the road.
This area is south and east of the Priest River area. Do you remember? No, the planning, our sub area.
Sub area.
I'm pretty sure it's south and east of it. Cause that one down. The south thing is that one long road, you see up there in the picture, adjacent to the river, but uh, I think this is out of the, I was just going to just for reference, if it was in the planning area, see what they recommended for land use, which we don't have yet. So some of those, those very same discussions took place in that group about areas that have designation that could fall either way. I, we hear the, we hear the reasoning quite frequently. When we bought, we looked into it, it was all this. We expected it to stay there. That's valid. That's a valid comment. What the problem with it is, how far did anybody look? Did they look at the definitions and descriptions of the comp plan and zoning code and rationalize whether or not that really did? So, cause that's what we're faced with is applying the code, what the code says and what best fits in the code. Short of some and, and can't really, a plan amendment and a zone change, not the lots on the ground. It, it, at this point, we don't know whether it could be, if it went to 10 acre zoning, could they get seven lots? Maybe, maybe not. We don't know. That hasn't been judged yet. Or even for that matter, whether, if they would apply for seven. It's one of the problems with that. The stepped land use process. The stepped land use process doesn't give you. The end result discussion upfront. But it's that's what the code says. Okay, so Commissioner Davis. On. It's the comprehensive plan amendment, uh, which is AM. File AM zero zero one seven dash two one. I move to recommend approval to the board of county commissioners. This project AM seventeen dash twenty one. Requesting a comprehensive plan map amendment from prime ag forest. Land to ag forest. Finding it is in accordance with the general and specific objectives of the. Bonner County Comprehensive Plan, Bonner County Revised Code has enumerated following conclusions law based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report is prepared. And testimony received at this hearing for the move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report. And direct the planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not resolve the taking of private property.
Commissioner Davis has made a motion to approve AM zero zero. Zero zero one seven dash two one comprehensive plan map amendment. Gary and Rose Reed. Is there a second?
Commissioner Glasso, a second.
Commissioner Glasso, the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close day. So. It's me in the hot seat and I am. Oh, excuse me. Okay, motion passed. I'm sorry. Okay, we move on to the zone change.
How's it easy for you to read? Always good. Uh, Commissioner Glasso, I motion to approve. I I move to recommend approval to. Board of County Commissioners of Project File ZC thirty dash twenty one requesting a zone change from agricultural forestry twenty to agricultural forestry ten. Finding that it is in accordance with general and specific objective of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. And Bonner County Revised Code has enumerated upon conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of the staff report left prepared. And testimony received at this hearing. And for the move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draft. Written findings and conclusions to reflect reflect this motion and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not take does not result in taking a private property.
Commissioner Glasso has made a motion to approve ZC zero zero three zero dash two one. Zone change Gary and Rose Reed. Is there a second?
Commissioner Davis will second that motion.
Commissioner Davis, the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close day. Motion carries. Yes, um, so me, if you guys could could meet with Milton out in the hallway here and he can explain to you folks what's happening next and we'll. Move on with our.
Wait about.
Or or you can make. This is this is this is we're just saying our recommendations upstairs. You'll have a second chance. To appeal this to the board of commissioners.
Or to talk to, yeah. To go to that hearing. It's another new hearing on this case with the board of county commissioners and it'll be scheduled as soon as they, I don't know. Do you have any potential?
Yeah, I'll look for it.
Okay.
Give me one second.
We try to get them scheduled as quickly as we possibly can. But we've done our part, so now they get to consider it. But they do hold. It's called a de novo hearing. So they look fresh at it. They do take our recommendation into consideration, but it doesn't mean that they have to apply.
November tenth.
November tenth. Should be there. And that'll be listed in the paper. Yeah.
And then check the website to and for their agenda before November tenth. Make sure it's on the agenda. So we're going to move on with our next file. Which is AM zero zero one six dash two one. Text amendment title twelve thirty. Thirty three three Jacob Marvel and Josh. Gilch. Are requesting the title twelve text amendment. As follow B C R C twelve three 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 standard. Thirty three. Thirty three. Maximum square footage for mini storage, boat storage and rental warehouse facility on a single lot. For parcels shall be ten thousand square feet for rural service center and recreational districts. Minimum square footage for mini storage, boat storage and rental warehouses in commercial and industrial district. Shall be in. Any other quicks interest?
Thank you, fellas. This is the planning staff. We have AM sixteen twenty one. This is amendment to the Bonner County Rescue twelve dash three thirty three. This is less common. We haven't. We don't get very often text amendments from outside source, so there's we'll go over kind of the standards for this review. I'll go over. Kind of the effect as staff sees what what effect it have on the on the code and then the criteria. To to make this change coming from that success. So as the chair said, this is. The change to the standard, so. Twelve dash three 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 and it's standard table and the criteria thirty three and I'll get to that down. So there's the code two or twelve dash two thirteen is one that authorizes citizens to make this request. So here we are, the commercial use table three dash three. Right now it's it's a permitted use in the commercial industrial with this specific. Guidance or regulation on it where the maximum square footage of many stores. Now the underlying red is what's being added in the. You know, the strike through is what's being taken away. So the effect is that the maximum square footage of mini storage, boat storage and we go down the last line. Went to warehouses in the right in the commercial and industrial district shall be. Currently, there's a forty thousand square footage per parcel. Maximum of mini storage and boat storage. So kind of a I wanted to put this in picture form to kind of see what it looks like, right? So how does this change? So someone currently has a ten acre parcel. Um, in a commercial industrial district and there's thirty or thirty thousand square feet of mini storage, right? And they wanted to add an additional ninety thousand square feet. They can, but they have to go through a minor land division. And create four parcels rather than keep it on one, right? So they can do it more or less. There's just some red tape they have to go through. So essentially, what what this change is doing is removing that red tape. You can do it all on one on one lot. Okay. Now, given that we still have a thirty five percent lot coverage, whether that's thirty five percent of four lots, right, or thirty five percent of one lot. It's still thirty five percent maximum. And same with setbacks are still in place. None of those are changing. This is. Kind of cleaning up the code and making that development of mini storage, boat storage and those commercial industrials districts a little easier. So we mailed out notices to all tacting districts. And all these agencies, we got back two comments, one from Independent Highway District, another from. Pirey Hospital District with no comments. Uh, we didn't receive any comments comments from anybody else, uh, no public comments as of the time staff. And I checked against their songs. No comments. So I look over the criteria for changing a text amendment. And there's black. So government bodies and staff, so we have the. Criteria. Shall review the particular facts and circumstances of each proposal submitted. And shall determine whether there is adequate evidence that follows in accordance with general objectives. General and specific objectives of the comp plan. So when I review this, it 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 hits a lot of different areas as I see it, um, property rights, economic development, land use. Public services, facilities and utilities and transportation. So when I reviewed the comp plan, it there's a handful that of. Specific spots within the comp plan that support this change. Specifically, uh, in the comprehensive plan implementation section, two point four and economic development. We have objectives three and five and policies three and ten. I'll go over each one of those and why I think it supports this change. So in objective three. It's the commercial industrial areas shall. Be located in defined areas which encourage cluster development and and discourage sprawl or strip developments. Um, so by. Allowing this change, uh, removing that forty forty thousand square foot limit. Um. Where. I think it it would result in less strip or less sprawling and strip developments. So we moved to objective five, the Bonner County shall consider the impact of commercial industrial developments on natural resources. I think that, um, mini storage and boat search are fairly typical examples of development that don't have a significant impact on natural resources. So they they're not consuming a lot of urban services, but where. Um, you know, other think like a lumber mill or think of like production where it's utilizing a lot of water or producing a lot of. Uh, sewage or whatnot, so and not a not a significant impact or less impact than something more natural. Some policy three. So moving on to the two policies, a low impact and light industrial uses should be encouraged to provide a stable economic base while avoiding environmental. So again, these two uses are categorized when I looked up at the N A I C S as light industrial use. Because they don't emit smoke, um, dust, dirt, toxin or offensive odors or gases and there's little to no production of heat or glare that can be seen from adjacent sites. So less less impact, right? Policy ten, it's. Uh, Bonner County supports the development of industrial and commercial. And and rural service areas. Uh, in location where services and transportation networks are readily available and where it will work with. Uh, to develop businesses and industrial parks where land use is the mission and services. Um, have been replanned. So I believe this change strengthens Bonner County's position. Uh, to encourage development in industrial and commercial areas throughout the county. So. Uh, with that, I have my finding and facts. These are same as what was in the staff report. I don't think I need the research. Reviews. Um, and same with the conclusions law. I don't have any other changes of the manuals in the staff report. So with that, I. Staff concludes the project is consistent with the Bonner County Detailed Code and basing the contents of the staff report, including the standards, finding the fact and conclusions law. Staff recommends approval of this change.
Questions to stand?
We got maybe one. Jake, thanks for the example there that showed.
Yeah, I can pull it back out and you guys will see.
Well, that's that's just one example. I'm thinking more of. What out there on the ground are examples where.
Sure.
They had to go through final land division or such.
Single and storage is one good example, so.
Which one?
Uh, what is it called?
Talking about Kenny's Kenny's storage or the one with the G out front?
The big one.
Yeah, the big one.
Modern storage.
The storage station.
Yeah, so that's one where it's, you know, it's larger than forty, had to be split into four lots or less.
What about across the highway? Boat storage. That's definitely more than.
So boat storage, not mini storage.
That's boat store.
Yeah, it's just. Only this only the forty thousand square feet only applies to mini storage.
Well, not if we make this change though, right?
Yeah, well, no longer apply to mini storage. But right now.
So so there was actually a text amendment four years ago or something.
No, ten.
Ten that that precluded or made boat storage unlimited, but so the guy who owns that boat.
Yes.
The one that did the text amendment. He came in because there was some questions. He's expanding a little bit.
So that's already. Just subject to the coverage limitation.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Again, we still have setbacks. We still have maximum thirty five percent lot coverage. Essentially, we would just have to divide properties and meet those setbacks to increase their, you know, the size of their.
Do you have questions? Mr. Josh, would you like to say?
No. I think Jacob's. Handsome face that Josh tracks around. He's got a more charming personality than I do.
Uh, good evening commissioners and staff and fellow citizens. Uh, just want to take a second to say, uh, thank you for. To the commissioners and staff for your professionalism, transparency of your service. Um, anytime and any help I can call the, uh. Planning Department and get on somebody's calendar to help on a chance that you're better. Um, and since it seems like everybody understands what's happening here, I'll take a second to soapbox and say it's too bad that. So many people interested in the previous topic of zone change. Left. Uh, the room tonight because I'm a Bonner County resident proposing a change to title twelve. Which is something that many of those interested in, uh, standards for zoning, uh, would be interested in. People pouring against the change that we proposed. Anyway, um, staff has described our requested amendments type of votes, so I don't mean to restate anything. Um, I just want to demonstrate how title twelve, section three 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 footnote thirty three. Does not actually limit the development of self-storage within the commercial district, but title twelve, section four twelve does. Um. What happens is, as Mr. Rebel demonstrated, you just. Split the lot so that you get around to title twelve, three three three, and then four twelve kicks in. So I'm going to do the same thing that Jacob just did, but, uh. With different pictures. And I'm also going to take it one step farther. Okay, so let's say that someone has a five acre parcels in commercial. They'd like to put storage on it. Which is a thing that there isn't any available of right now in Bonner County. Um. So they look into the code, they find out that they can put forty thousand square feet of. Of self-storage, mini storage on this on this parcel. What to do with the rest of the parcel? I don't know. Let's just split in half and do it twice. Well, right here, we've gone from forty thousand on five acres. To two, two and a half acre parcels, the same same physical piece of God given land. Uh, we've hit thirty five percent coverage, so we've maximized four twelve. Whereas over here in the first example, we've maximized three three three. So instead of getting to eighty thousand square feet here on, um. The second example, we've only we've hit seventy six thousand two hundred and thirty. Okay, so we've maximized four twelve and now now three 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 doesn't matter anymore. But I'm going to take it a step farther. And go to two stories. So, um, a place where you might find two story storage is. There's one in Ponderay, that's called Four Seasons Storage. It's a climate control. It's a simple math, surface area to volume ratio. If you've got a climate control building, you want to go up instead of out. Okay, so here we get around three 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 again. By splitting into four lots in step two. So. Red means two stories, yellow means one story. We've got a hundred fifty two thousand square feet of total storage, but we've maintained the rule. Or or kept ourselves within the rule of thirty five percent coverage given by four twelve. So we maximize four twelve again and again, three 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 doesn't matter. So, uh, Mr. Rebel already covered this. Um, if I could go back a couple of months when we wrote this this application. I would propose that footnote thirty three from twelve three 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 be removed completely. Um, because there were there would be few three 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 threes in this. Uh, and also because the rest of footnote thirty three, I mean, the word unlimited here is silly because of four twelve. Um, but also the first sentence in in this footnote three three is the same thing. It's ten thousand square foot limit on. Rural Service Center and. But also the first sentence in this footnote 33 is the same thing, it's ten thousand square foot limit on rural service center and something else, I think, maybe. Anyways, in the same applying, you've got ten acres of rural service center. Just split it a few times and you can put ten thousand on each lot, you're done. So again, 412 kicks in. The right button doesn't do anything, so that must be the end of my slides. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And we've got, you didn't give my. Name and address for the record, please.
Jacob Marvel, 3742 Grammy Drive, San Point, Arizona.
Thank you.
Okay. So. You got it? Yeah? Have anybody signed up? So would anybody like to speak?
No one like to speak?
Nobody online? Okay, so. One to read a little.
Oh, yeah, so that's the confusion, is boat storage, the word boat storage.
Is it?
Oh, yes. Underlined, yeah, it's underlined.
Yeah.
So it would say the maximum square footage for mini storage, boat storage, and rental warehouse, commercial industrial. So here's how it reads right now. So there's a limit. In the rural service center.
And then boat, mini storage, facilities, I see.
And it's separate, about commercial. For you.
Okay, so going back to the use table. And so there's rental warehouse. Rental warehouse, and I have storage.
So it's a conditional use in the rec and the rural service center, but a max one ten thousand square. I think that's fairly consistent with those zones, right? You don't really want recreation zone being filled to quite as a conditional use because you want to see that rather than just an outright property use. Same thing with the rural service center, it's kind of, that's why I didn't make any proposing changes to this. I think it makes a lot more sense in the commercial industrial zone, it's more consistent.
I just wanted to check, we've added boat storage to note three.
Boat storage permitted, and again, it's.
Conditional. So it's same thing, it's rec and that, for rural service. Otherwise, it's just all right, it's just lot coverage.
Right. Again, we have just that one criteria, is it consistent with the comp plan, right? That's why we went through.
So the whole justice is to eliminate extra steps to maximize the use of the property for storage.
Right.
Because if it can be done now, it takes another, through, one, two, three extra steps.
Correct.
So the same end result is. Same.
Well, you know, this piece of property sits right next to Burlington. It has no good for it. It's perfect use.
We're not talking about specific property, we're talking about.
Well, I know, I'm saying, but, you know, which we have so, we have so little commercial zone.
Right, I'm just looking at single storage depot, if that.
It's a hundred and sixty thousand square feet of storage.
Yeah, and it was one lot.
It was, it still is, actually.
Well, true, it's all one lot.
He started MLD process.
A single lot. So, and now, but it's just as if it was still a single lot because the use is the use is the use. So that's what I'm getting at, is the rationale for the necessity.
Well, it seems like it streamlines the process for people who want to do this. And the way it is currently doesn't really impose any limits because it doesn't ease work. So I just take it away from me and go through that work, those work for real steps.
Right.
But if you add, and the result is going to be the same for both cases.
Same, doesn't appear to be any detriment. So they have setbacks, you still have maximum coverage. It's just that density number, that square foot number.
Yeah.
My vote, being that one area or two areas or three areas, I'll go a little bit more. Stay out in a dozen, we might have six.
Yeah.
Will that perfect, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. This is Commissioner Frankenbach. I move to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners for this project file AM 0016-21 to amend Title 12, Chapter 3, Subchapter 3.3, Commercial Use Table Standard 33, Bonner County Vice Code, as presented or amended at this hearing. Finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Opera House of Plan as enumerated in the following findings of fact and conclusions of law, and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draft pre-compliments and conclusions to reflect this motion and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in taking a private process.
Mr. Frankenbach has made a motion to approve AM 0016-21 text amendment, Title 12, 333, Jacob Marvel and Josh Pitch. There's a second.
Commissioner Frankenbach, so I'll second you.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Okay. You guys, you want to, next file? File S 0003-21 Sundance Acres Subdivision, Clay Wagner Trust is requesting a subdivision of forty-two point five four acres and five point oh nine acres of land to create twenty-seven lots ranging in size from one point two to six point one. This property is owned recreational. Project is located East Side Road, East River Road, excuse me, in Section 10, County 59 North, Range 4 West, Boise Meridian. Planning zoning commissions public carry on August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The applicant withdrew this file from the proceedings. On August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, the applicant requested to move forward once again with public carry. Are there any conflicts in the future? There are none with staff.
The MP, Jacob Bell, Assistant Planning Director, presenting for staff. As you know, this looks somewhat familiar, it wasn't too long ago. To kind of give you a brief history of what happened, we went back and talked to the applicant. We reviewed the PUD standards after the previous hearing. They debated and looked through it, took a couple weeks, week and a half, and decided the standards within the PUD didn't fit their project of what they wanted to accomplish. So they, the end result, they said, hey, we'll go with the dedication of the right of way and make a public street move forward project. They did a change to their site plan, you'll see that. And they reduced the total number of lots, increased, so we'll look through that. But I'll try not to speed through this too quick, but it's essentially the same review I did before, but just some minor updates to it. So they reduced the lot size or the lot count to twenty-one residential lots ranging from one point one to two to fifteen point eight six five. So there's our site plan and how they've amended it. So they created that one lot. You can see where they've taken the notes from their previous conversation with Rittenbridge and created those less angular, more curved roads. It was re-noted, republished. And we didn't. So the site doesn't change at all, again, it's rec zone, the comp plan, resort community, access off East River Road, county owned and maintained. They're proposing individual wells and they have a well-served ladder from the Coolin Sewer District. And served by Coolin County, the fire district powered by Northern Lights and school. It's school district of Bonner County, or Bonner School. There's our, the two maps for the comp plan and for the zoning. Environmental features, you can see it's fairly ideal for subdivision. They have no slopes, there's no wetlands, there's no river streams or lake frontages. There's no flood plain, currently has one home, and it's mostly covered in trees. Those are the agencies that were routed, of which we heard back from DEQ. They had a four-page standard letter, no specific, no specific requirements on this project. PHD, they requested this, the lift of sanitary sewer. And then Idaho Department of Fish and Game gave us a standard four-page letter, no recommendations, lots of, not, no specific requirements, a handful of recommendations. Don't leave your trash out, what the bears do, that kind of stuff, so it's pretty steady. We had no other agencies that replied. We had, we did receive a handful of public comments, I think you have those in your staff report. To kind of sum it up, the concerns from the public were traffic impacts, lack of water supply in the area, and water table, lack of public resources, and impact on emergency and fire resources. This is what the surrounding site looks like, the uses of it. Stormwater, we haven't, we still haven't gotten an updated stormwater management plan, it's just a condition of approval we've had before the compliance. So standard review, with the changes I went through, more or less recalculated them. Depth and width is still fine, the minimum lot size, they're still well within it. The average is two, if you take out the fifteen acre, the average is slightly less, right? I think you have like one and a half. It's still well, well above the twenty thousand square foot limit. We didn't, we haven't received any updates on the, the well-served letter is still sufficient. We haven't received any updated well analysis other than the original one. Same thing with the fire risk assessment plans, DCV adequate, and then the road being this one. So we look over grading stormwater erosion control, we've had a standard condition of approval for that for any larger elements like this. No conditions for wetlands because there's any, no conditions from Fish and Game on the bottom line. For preliminary plant requirements, the only thing I didn't see was the location of the current well. And they just need to add that as a note on the company's plan. Same thing with updating the street name, which I think I saw in Travis's, that he's updated on the rules. It said East Side River, it said East River, so it's a simple change. Again, on the road requirements, it's required to be dedicated to the public. And so we added this basic condition of approval saying, and this was sent through the Bonner County Sheriff's Department, so more or less they need to sign off on the final sign of it once it is done. So there's our preconditioned approval. The last condition I added there, there's a small piece between those two county roads. It's about point seven acres, it's part of this property, we verified it. I chatted with Travis about this, the project director, said, hey, just, we just need to know what you plan on doing that. I don't think, if not proposed to be a residential lot, I don't know who would want to live between two county roads. But maybe just indicate on that final plan, what's the, what's the intended long-term use of this? Are you going to dedicate it and give it to the public, or are you going to, you know, make a park out of it? Wouldn't be safe, but what's the intended use? Didn't make any other changes to the other condition of approval from the previous time we reviewed this, so. So with that, staff concludes it's consistent with the code, we recommend approval of subdivision. If you answer the question.
Questions to staff?
So once again, we didn't have any traffic volume figures from Rittenbridge on the two county roads.
There's just a blunt version of the new site plan and concerns.
Yeah.
So both for the land use and the zoning, resort community and recreational, there's a requirement for urban services. Do we normally consider just having sewer to be sufficient?
It depends on density that they're putting in. So when they're requesting, so typically it'd be two and a half acres with no urban services. When they're through the code, if they're providing sewer urban services, they can go to twenty thousand square feet. If it's sewer and water, I think it's twelve thousand or ten. And I put in directions, twelve thousand. So they can go down to half acre if they have sewer. Quarter acre, half.
Sewer.
Sewers, half, totally, yeah, exactly.
Any other questions to staff? Project Director, Travis.
Travis Howler, Clay Ian Associates, New at Pre-Street Street. Back here again, Sundance Acres. Here I have twenty-two lots of division. It, it's still in question whether that sliver is on the other side, it sounds. I got a title company on it, so hopefully we'll have an answer. So I'll show that. Overview, so you can see where the south end of Priest Lake, you can see Coolin, the actual Coolin proper, if you want to call it that, downtown, whatever. So we're right there, we have lots, small, adjacent there. And you can see we're right at the confluence, the intersection right before with Dick and Sheep and East River Road, right there. We are talking forty-two acres for the big one, you can see the little sliver on the other side in between Dick and Sheep and East River Road. And then the owners also own the five acre parcel down here in the lower right-hand corner. This is the latest and greatest, the different changes with the one Jake showed you is one road instead of two, well, this stretch, we had two before it came in and then Cosec's still there, this is the point seven six, six, seven acres in question, that's twenty-two. Also, we stopped it from here, the big concern in this project is really, this is state land, and if we're going to dedicate it to the public, why are we going to, why is the HOA going to maintain a road that the public's going to use? So we bumped it back, so there is actually no access to outside, to the public from what's being dedicated, you can see that's the reason for some of these. The owner, Mike, Davey brought up, it's twenty thousand with urban sewer. Didn't want to go down to twenty thousand, didn't want to create this crazy subdivision of development and get in and get out. The owner was raised on this property, he's here today, born and raised. Going to retain most of it, but, you know, all. But you know, also, it's like we came before P&amp;Z, the commissioners, we're proposing a gated community. This is still going to be a, a community, HOA, CCNRs, vacationers, rental retirees, you know, large enough lots to still have some privacy, but, and be able to maintain for retirees being one lot, but you're not right on top of each other. We're talking what, potentially 21, 22 lots in 47 acres? That's not crazy. Show you the surrounding area, you know, the other lots, the other subdivisions that are already existing in that area. See the state land is 275 acres off to the east there. And then the services are the big one. Sewer, Coolin Sewer District for the sewer, water, individual wells. That seems to be a point of contention. Obviously, we can't have houses if we don't have the wells. So that will be addressed at a later date, but that's what we're proposing. We did think about going the PUD route, the planned unit subdivision, but within the county code that requires a certain amount of land being dedicated to the public, open space, green space. And we calculated and that was over, it was almost five acres. And so talking to the owner, we decided, let's re, let's look this back over again. And so we've gone back to the normal standard subdivision, dedicating the roads to the public, privately maintained. So overall, like I said before, private community, HOA, not having access outside of the public roads, those being dedicated privately maintained. So for the preliminary plat process that we're in right now, I hope that gives an overview of the services, the layout. Everything else will be addressed at a later date as we progress.
Travis, how far south is the substation road that cuts over Dick and Sheep? You have like a mile south of that project, or is it pretty close, right?
Probably three quarters of a mile.
Yeah, so much more.
Yeah, so their, their line of travel is going to go out, they're not even going to go into Coolin, most likely. They're going to go hit the substation and skip the road into the south.
They could.
Versus going up there.
Personally, nobody's going to go to downtown Cool.
And this was a reduction from about 27 or 29 lots before?
About 27.
This one, or do you guys like that one better?
Or do you keep it up with the proposal? So I'm just, I don't know, for sake of talking, I guess. So here you got 20 with the sliver over there, 22. And before it was 27. That's not what it would be for us today. If we don't need to go there, but you looked into a PUD and you found that the numbers didn't crunch because it would require some amount of open space.
Correct, PUDs are planned into subdivision.
Requires. And yet lots 20, what is, how many acres? 16, 16 acres? Because all of a sudden you start adding in roads and stuff. This is, again, this is supposed to be a private. Yeah, and, and we don't, we can't say what you should do.
What are you thinking?
Well, I'm just, I'm just curious because it only took five acres to get a PUD rolling. And here we got a 50 acre lot, which can only be divided through a subdivision, but is capable of being divided in the recreation zone further someday, whatever.
I don't think with the.
Isn't that true?
Can the subdivision be?
You can resubdivide, resubdivide, I mean, even that, any of those lots could be resubdivided. Because of the recreation zone.
I don't know, is there any, is there any talk of putting in the HOA, the CCNRs that know further subdividing?
Correct, the CCNRs will provide, the lots cannot be further subdivided. Then we may put an exception to that for the one large lot. And just, just so you understand, the, the, the property owner, that's going to be his personal risk.
Why don't you introduce yourself? Because you're, well, he's part of the.
Well, I know, let's let Travis finish up and then you got. Sorry. Yeah, so I have Brad and his wife, they're the current owners. Brad was born and raised on the property. Brad, just put it up your hand. And Dallas is helping out with the development. He was representing Brad and contacted Clay.
Great, so you guys are all a team.
That was the question, it seemed, it seemed like what's on the paper somewhat contradicts the look into a PUD because it couldn't come up with five acres. But yeah, there it is. And then again, we don't, we can't tell you what to do. Just curious. The planner, I think, is looking to figure out what's going on. And the fact that one of the principles that's in the comp plan is to provide as much as possible access to state lands and so forth. The other broad aerial shows that that state has access. Comes in off of the upper road, goes right down through it, and it deserves the other parcel itself, but that gives you direct access, so this parcel doesn't need to provide that access through it to get to the state. We tackle with that argument as well, too, that's the best. Piece of land, lots of state land, what do you do? Not the case here.
But that makes sense, right? We, if, if all of a sudden we're asking the owner to dedicate public land, why are you going to open up the door for everybody else to take care of it?
Okay, so Travis, you're done. Did the property owners like to say anything? Or you?
Sure.
And address record, please.
Okay, Brad Wagner, 6537, Majestic Avenue in Rafterham is my current residence. First of all, thank you, commissioners and staff for your time. Sorry that we had to take two times to get to this. First of all, I'll address a couple of the questions here. One of the reasons the change here is, is yes, this is, this is a piece I intend to keep. I currently live in Rafterham, but you know, I hope to move back there again someday. I was born in Sandpoint, I moved up to Coolin when I was a month old. I don't remember it, that's what they tell me. So this was one I was going to keep. And along with the first three parcels, one, two, and three up front where the current home is, and a barn and a couple of barns, keep that. The reason, nobody would, wants to see development in, in Coolin less than I do. And all this, this is where I grew up playing as a kid, chasing grouse around and riding my bicycle around, all that stuff. But right now, my parents are both in assisted living and memory care, and this is why I'm doing it. Simply because I'm keeping this and this because I don't want to sell it all. I don't want to develop it all. I only, I'm going to sell enough to, to take care of them and then keep the rest because I know that's what they wanted. And hopefully that, that will be, will go on in their legacy and keep that in the family. And unfortunately, I had to keep a back piece and front pieces because shape was really kind of awkward there and bringing it in. But we made those changes since last time, and I think we can move through there and have some of those lots. And to be honest, maybe we don't sell all of those lots. We don't know. It's what we need to properly take care of them, you know, and maintain this property in the family going on in the future. And to address some of the road concerns, any, any traffic, trust me, I've been up there. You know, I grew up up there when it was much quieter than it is now. And I've been up there probably every weekend for the last five years, if not longer. If anything, this will create less traffic going on because there will be more people that have a, you know, are anchored in there and that will travel less, will be driving by with their big pickup and campers less because they'll have an anchor place up there for their snowmobiles and their boats and all that. And I'm hoping that, you know, if that, and that's why we didn't take the option to go down to smel, smaller lots in, you know, I could have sold less of the property and sold smaller lots and probably still made the profit that I need to take care of my parents, but that's not what we wanted for, you know, our neighbors in our community that we, we want to be in too. So, and what I see for Coolin in the future. And the noise, we didn't want to bring the road back so that it didn't get pushed onto state land for the snowmobiles and ATVs and UTVs making that the main trail back out to the mountains. So that's one of the reasons we cut it off. Any questions?
Any questions to the floor? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. So, close that. Is anybody in the audience that would wish to speak about this project other than the folks there? Okay, anybody online? Okay, let's move to commissioners' deliberations in a moment, please.
I like the, I like the layout better than the other ones. Softening of the curves.
I agree.
Yeah.
I liked it even more.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, just as a comment, I think proposed lot 22 would make a good park. It's about 200 feet wide down at the bottom end, it could, parking in there, be a nice, nice little neighborhood pocket park.
You know, just a comment on that 22, that sliver out front. So three months ago, I retired from the department lands and we was looking into this while I was still working. So I went to our GIS folks within EDL and they told me, because they just, I'd done clear cutting it probably four or five years ago. And they said it had been transferred a number of years ago, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm lost. I like your, you know, hey, I'd love it if it's one.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Well, housing is needed up there, whether it's retirement or just working.
Yeah, that's definitely, this one does fall into the subarea that the folks up there Priest Lake were looking at. And that is one of the things they talked about was the need for housing and where it would be and Coolin was a discussion and on the west side of some pockets where more density in the lots then exists. That was, again, we're not tied into what they're recommending, but those discussions were sound discussions.
Thank you for the motion.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Frank Abad, I move to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners for this project file S0003-21 for a subdivision of 47.63 acres. The plan to create 21 residential lots ranging in size from 1.1 to 15.8 acres, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revise Code as enumerated in all conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact, the conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion and transmit to all interested parties. The action that could be taken to obtain the plat is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in the taking of private property. The action that could be taken to obtain the preliminary plat is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted.
Commissioner Frank Abad has made a motion to approve S0003-21 Sundance Acres Subdivision, Clay Wagner Trust. Is there a second?
Commissioner Glassell, second.
Commissioner Glassell, second for motion. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Is that, I'll see now.
What I was thinking, we could clear the titling on this before we go to the BOCC for the final approval of this. And I think that's hearing.
The motion was for approval of the 21 lot subdivision. Potentially it could be 22. And legitimately, if it does prove that it's part of there, so what do we?
Mel, do you think we need to amend that to?
If you're going to change it to 22, sure.
Well, that's it. I mean, it says 21, so that is the recommendation. Granted, the commissioners could deal with it and so forth, but should we make it?
Can we make, can we make it either or depending on how the investigation of the title turns out?
22, then we have a title. So I feel the motion maker would amend it that way.
I would amend the motion to read, to create a 21 or 22 residential lot subdivision, depending on the investigation of the ownership of that one piece.
Another second, I agree.
Any discussion? On, David, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Okay, so Suzanne, you going to stay for this? Should we?
Oh, I'm staying, yes. I will go, just go through your procedure and I will.
Okay, very good.
This is on the record, buddy? Like it's on your?
Sure. I'm not a poll. Just stay on.
Okay. Okay, we're going to take a quick.
I was going to, I got a couple of expeditions.
Well.
You.
Who you representing? No, I'll forward. Okay. Our next file is B-0013-21 Lot Size Minimum Variance. US Bank is requesting a lot size minimum variance to create a 2.7 acre lot with five acres is required on 151.16 acre parcel to house an existing septic drain field on the property. Property is rural five, the pro- project is located off Dur Island Road and Apple Grove Lane, Section 4, Township 55 North, Range 2 East, Boise Meridian. Are there any conflicts?
Oh, yeah. Somewhere as I pride myself in keeping my professional life private, I work for US Bank, so I'm just gonna have to step off of this one.
Okay, so Commissioner Glasso has boozed herself. Staff, who may present the floor?
So Chad Chambers, the planner, is the one to review this. He knew you guys would miss the sound of his awesome voice, so he's recorded his presentation on this. He's on vacation, he's out at a wedding with a friend. So as soon as I hit go, it'll advance the slides. No, he's not online, he's not here to answer questions. I'll answer any questions on it, but the next two files he's recorded and so he's presenting, if you will, so.
Modern technology.
It should work.
Thanks, commissioners, for being here tonight. This is Chad with Bonner County Planning, and we're here to discuss a lot size minimum variance request for US Bank for a property located off Dur Island Road in Section 4, Township 55 North, Range 2 East. The applicant is requesting to create a 2.7 acre lot where five acre minimum is required for the rural five acre zoning district that this property is situated in. The intended use will be essentially a continuation of the this specific piece of property that they'd like to create a lot for, which is being used for a septic drain field and backup septic drain field. This is kind of a closer site plan that we can get a little bit more of context of the property design prepared by Mr. Dan Provault, licensed surveyor. We're looking at a 151.16 acre parcel. It's in the Rural Residential Comprehensive Land Use Plan. It's zone rural five acre. It's accessed by Dur Island Road, which is privately owned and maintained. There are no map slopes on the property. There are two types of mapped wetlands, freshwater emergent wetland and freshwater forested shrub wetland. Um, and it does contain a waterfront to Lake Ponderay. The existing services on the property are the, you know, septic drain field as mentioned earlier. Um, the applicant wrote that a well is not applicable per the application. Uh, it's served by the West Side Fire District. It's powered by Avista Utilities and it's in the Bonner County School District 84. The property was reviewed for floodplain, uh, by our certified floodplain manager, Jason Johnson. Uh, he did find that the property is situated in the flood zone AE, which means that it is in the floodplain and that the base elevation of that floodplain is known. And this particular, you know, review of the application does not require any further floodplain review. Uh, these are the standards we use to review the file. We routed the file for public comment, or sorry, rather, agency comment on the 7th of September to the following agencies. And I would just note here that, um, where it says applicable utility company, we notified both Avista Utilities and Northern Lights. Um, because at the time which this was noticed, we weren't certain, um, who the power company was. It was later clarified that it was Avista Utilities. Um, some agencies commented. Idaho Fishing Games said they don't have any comments for the application. The EQ kind of gave us their generic response saying that they, uh, you know, don't review projects on a project specific basis. Panhandle Health District said that they've been in ongoing communication and collaboration with all the entities involved in this request. And, uh, I would just note that their conclusion, the very last sentence of their letter, it indicated that they have no objection to the variance request. We received two public comments, both appeared to be identical letters. Um, you know, broadly from the surrounding landowners, just support of the variance request for the lot size. And they will certainly be benefiting from this, uh, request if it approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission today. So looking at the special conditions, um, the applicant wrote that, you know, the purpose of this lot size minimum variance is just to create a 2.7 acre parcel to just be used for that existing septic drain field and nothing else. Um, the circumstances, again, they did acknowledge that they are requesting a deviation from the minimum lot size standard of five acres. Um, but again, it'll be just limited to, um, the drain field and I think it's, it's useful to note that, you know, in surrounding areas, um, we're not looking at smaller lots that are being used for this purpose. So in that sense, it kind of does make it, um, unique. And I think the special condition is the, the fact that that drain field's already existing and has been approved by Panhandle Health and is on the property in that specific location where they like to create the lot. Um, also, we look at, you know, public interest is in conflict. Um, you know, the drain fields are currently existing. They had indicated that they've been in contact with Panhandle Health. That was confirmed by PhD's letter. Um, we didn't receive any comments from the general public in opposition to this file. And so, you know, that, that was part of staff's analysis of this request. Uh, as a result of that, staff did find it consistent with the Bonner County Revised Code. Um, you know, it's only going to be used for public utilities that are going to benefit the surrounding, uh, landowners. They've been above board in terms of their contact with Panhandle Health District, and that was demonstrated by their letter as mentioned before. Um, so we are recommending approval with standard conditions. Those standard conditions are essentially, you know, the highlighted site plan that was submitted, uh, is what the applicant is going to have to stick to. And then finally, you know, the variance shouldn't supersede any deed restrictions on the property. And at this point, staff can take any questions.
Right? You did a pretty good job.
Oh, good.
So, so while he was working on his doctorate degree, he was a professor, right? So, yeah, all that existed. So our code doesn't have anything in it for utility lot currently, right? So that's where this comes into place.
Is that why we're here?
Essentially creating a utility lot, right? It's just a shared, um, drain field. Why, and they, so they want it to be owned by the HOA, so they're rather than giving a big, big piece, or even a five acre piece, they're giving just what, what's being used. So it makes sense. I think, I think a tax amendment would be better, um, in the long run to create
Utility lot.
Utility lot.
It's in the subject wish code. Still worked on.
Yeah.
It's already there.
There you go. We talked about it, we talked about it, you know, it's like, it's already in there, right? We love, no, it's not.
Yeah. Well, it's the, it's the, it's the existing drain field and the placement is necessary, but just just, yeah. So it's its own separate lot specifically for
That's what they want.
And rather than taking another 2.3 acres from the other side of the river and, or give their ownership and just saying, here's our five acre lot or our drain field, which there could never be a drain field on the other part across the river.
So. Yeah, so it's right here and the lot is large, right?
So that's, that's, that's what I was wondering. That's where they have approval for the drain field. Yeah, and that would ask the 2.7 acres, not surrounding 2.3 acres. So, because they could have just carved out a five acre lot and been okay. For some reason, they've decided to do it this way. I guess so. It's that US Bank stuff.
Okay, well, he's online, you can ask that question.
No, he's not online.
He's online. No, the applicant's online, so.
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
Oh.
You can ask that question.
I don't know that it matters really, because the, the variance criteria is there. Yes, they created their own, apparently created their own situation with this. So it doesn't meet that criteria, if you will. But on circumstances, the other one, but well, maybe I just ask a question. Why couldn't five acres be carved out of the whole property designated as a utility lot?
So.
Are we gonna let him do his presentation?
If it is, oh.
The applicant's a presentation?
This is it.
No, 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 the applicant is online too, so.
Oh, okay.
Want to ask a question?
Chad said the staff can answer questions. I'm asking the staff questions. Okay, now, the staff can answer. Let me go to the applicant.
Yes.
So.
Okay, let's, gee, let's bring the applicant.
Greg.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, commissioners. My name is Greg Gembria. With us from Kelly, address is 608 Northwest Boulevard in, in Court Lane. As to the specific question, the answer is just, it's additional properties just isn't needed, um, for the septic drain fields and backup septic drain fields and the surrounding, the property surrounding the, the proposed 2.7 acres. US Bank, in its capacity of a, uh, of a white family trust owns and it's farm ground that's, that's being farmed. Um, and US Bank's farm manager is also here tonight if, if, uh, you'd like to pose any questions to him, but that's the simple reason. Um, it, the motivation is it just doesn't, it just doesn't make good sense for US Bank to be owning the drain field utilized by the neighboring residential property. And that association has expressed an interest in owning it themselves and they'll have a, and they, there is an existing easement for all those residential lots across the trust property to this 2.7 acre parcel that the HOA will be able to utilize. So we, we fully support the, uh, staff report for this limited purpose and be happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Jeanie.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, uh, thank you.
Okay, so. Anybody in the room?
No one with their hands up. Oh, yes, somebody has their hand up.
Okay, so. Yes, I understand. Um, so we're gonna move on to public comments, so go ahead, please.
Jane?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, and with everything that's been, oh, uh, uh, my name is Jane Mooney and I'm at 230 Apple Grove Lane in Clark Fork.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, um, I am the president of the Delta Shore State's Property Owners Association. And the, as, as you know, that 2.7 acre parcel is currently being used by the property owners as our common point drain field. Our association has been working with the owner to, uh, and if this variance is approved, then the, um, the next step would be that they would transfer the, uh, to our association. And that would, that would help the owners, uh, to better maintain and manage the drain field. And we would work closely with Panhandle Health on that as well. At our annual property, uh, uh, association meeting on August 7th of 2021, the majority of the property owners voted in support of this variance and, um, my husband and I, as, uh, owners on Dur Island, uh, have no objection to the approval of this variance.
Thank you.
That is all. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so both, both comment and open up commissioners' deliberations.
Now that everything's been explained, why are we here? I, I understand, yeah. I didn't catch that it was.
Okay.
So that means that, no, it wasn't an action by the opponent that caused this. It was, that they're in a, pardon the pun, a quiet murder. They gotta, they gotta do this, and yeah.
Okay. Jeanie, procedural question. Do I need to step down and look this chair or the two?
Unless we go against each other.
If there's a tie.
Because regardless, it's the company you left.
Okay, so.
We have a note? This is Commissioner Frankemack. Uh, I move to recommend approval of this project file B-0013-21. Request for a lot size minimum variance to, to create a 2.7 acre lot where five acres is required, finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact, the conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion and transmit to all interested parties. The action that could be taken to obtain the variance plat is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in taking of private property.
Commissioner Frankemack has made a motion to approve B-0013-21 Lot Size Minimum Variance, US Bank. Is there a second?
This question, Davis will second the motion. Any discussion? Discussion. The second to last line of the motion, the action that could be taken to obtain the plat. The variance. Just, let's just change that just to make it lengthier. Obviously, that's a carryover. Later of the motion. That's fine. I would support the change up to say that it's the variance.
Okay. Therefore. Therefore. Home favorites say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Here we go, I'm Mr. Martin. The hires has been here for hours. He's been in this seat before. Okay, our next file is M O D-0006-21 Conditional Use Permit, Modifications Spire's PUD. Mitch Martin is requesting to modify conditional use permit for this Spire's plan unit development to change condition A7, Private Road Standards for file C-892-07. The property is on Alpine Village. The proposed project is located off Tall Timber Road in Snag Line in Section 20 Township 58 North, Range 2 West, Boise Meridian. Are there any conflicts of interest? Nope, nope. Okay, staff, we go.
This is round two of Chad's recording. Hopefully it works as good as the first one. I did check these and they were working this time before, so. I'll hit go and I'll be here to express them here.
Thanks for being here tonight, commissioners and members of the public. We appreciate your participation. Tonight, we're here to discuss a road design modification for the Spire's PUD up at Switzer. Uh, the applicant is essentially requesting to change the road design from condition A7 that was originally added to the file C-892-07. Uh, and basically that standard as written in that original condition indicated that the, the minimum horizontal radii could be only 42 feet and not smaller than that. The applicant is requesting to modify that to 24 feet. Here's another part of the site plan that was submitted. Um, so we are looking at modifying the road design for the Spire's PUD. It's in the Alpine Community Comprehensive Land Use Plan designation. It's zone Alpine Village. It's accessed by Tall Timber Road and others. Uh, there are map slopes on the property between 15 to 29% grade and 30% or greater. There is a map reverine that kind of runs through the southeast corner of the, of the PUD. It does not contain a waterfront. There are three types of soil on the property, all of which are characterized as not prime. There are three types of soil on the property, all of which are characterized as not prime farmland. Sewage is managed by Mountain Utility Company, water is provided by Spire's Water Company. The properties are afforded fire protection by Schweitzer Fire, it's powered by Northern Lights Cooperative and it's in the Bonner County School District 84. The properties were reviewed for floodplain by Jason Johnson and our certified floodplain manager. It was found that they're both within zone X and D. Zone D essentially means that FEMA does not know the flood risk. So I think that's just worth noting, however, no further floodplain review was required for the proposal. These are the applicable standards we used to review the file. It was routed for agency comment on the 7th of September. Schweitzer Fire District wrote a letter that predated the agency comment routing period and basically it indicated that they were in support of the horizontal curve radii modification from 42 feet, which was originally written in the standard to 24 feet. I will note here that they had mentioned 40 feet, the minimum being 40 feet, however, the standard in condition A7 for file C 892-07 indicated that the minimum should have been 42 feet. Independent Highway District, you know, had said that the private roads within the spires P U D are outside of their authority. But the only concern that they had is that if they're deviating from the Bonner County Revised Code standards for roads, it, you know, is if it does reduce safety. And I think it's worth noting here that, you know, we, the applicant did provide a letter from Schweitzer Fire District indicating that they were broadly supportive of this project. Idaho Fish and Game wrote that they don't have any comments for the application. DEQ gave us their generic comment that says they don't review projects on a project-specific basis. Panhandle to Health District replied, no comment, all of the agencies didn't respond and we didn't receive any public comments at the time in which the staff report was prepared. So staff did find this consistent with the Bonner County Revised Code based upon the following. The county engineer who reviewed the proposal conditionally approved of it so long as this modification is today approved by the Planning and zoning commission and then later approved by the Board of County Commissioners. And so, looking at that, staff, you know, didn't really have a different direction to go because the county engineer did feel that it did satisfy the standards and would be safe enough to, to move forward with this design change with the road. And so, staff is recommending approval with some conditions. And these conditions are essentially that modification of the road design and stormwater management plan shall be operated and built to the specifics in accordance with the approved site plan. And then, prior to construction of the newly proposed road, the applicant must obtain a variance for the proposed placement of the fire hydrant to conform to the standards set forth in B C R C Appendix A of Title 12, Section 2.5, Road Design B. I believe they are deviating from the standard in, in terms of where the fire hydrant is placed in relation to the road. This is something the county engineer brought to my attention and so as a result of that, we are adding it as a condition of approval to, that the applicant must, must obtain a administrative variance likely to deviate from the standard. At this time, staff can take any questions.
Questions, Scott? This, this is only dealing with modification, just with this one curve on the road?
Well, we can ask Mr. Martin, this probably knows. Would you like to ask a question to the applicant?
Well, the applicant wants to say something at this point.
Sure.
My name is Mitch Martin, 138 North Idaho Club Drive, same place in Idaho. The process that is occurring here is, they originally designed it for the 42 foot radius, which I found out was something that our engineer volunteered, it was never a requirement of Bonner County. That turned out to create a edge pavement, the edge of pavement width of 120 feet, which created a 40 foot wall on the cut side above that with a ski trail only 100 feet above that. So if anybody deviated off that ski trail, they're gonna fall off the edge of a 40 foot cliff. So I asked our engineer, why is it such a big switchback when I will see many other switchbacks up at Schweitzer that large? And he said that that was what the original developer put in. So this is the first switchback that I, as the developer, had built, all the other switchbacks were already roughed in when we got there. So, we came to the conclusion that the best thing to do would be to talk to Spencer, the fire chief, because it's all about getting the fire truck there. So Spencer and I together went and measured multiple switchbacks around Schweitzer that he knew were good and he knew were bad. And he came up to the conclusion of what his letter says. I'd also like to point out that Mogul Hill, right before you get to the spiders, there's a very tight switchback that is only 68 feet across with only a 21 foot radius. So, this switchback can never become an impediment to moving around because you can't get to it in the first place. That said, I could answer any questions, but the one that's confusing here is I don't even know what's, we didn't change anything with fire hydrants, so I'm not sure what the B is.
I was trying to find hydrant on the drawing, so it is, I don't know, maybe go back up to the drawing that's in the staff report, or the substantial.
The statute that he's referring to, or the code he's referring to, says where fire hydrants are located along the roadway, the minimum width of the travelway shall be 26 feet. This may be accomplished by construction of a turnout, providing an overall travelway width of 26 feet.
This relay has nothing to do with the modification request, when our plans were reviewed.
Let's see, you look at the component, you look at the requirements for analysis, and you look at the result, goals, and objectives listed in the plan. So it's a couple of tests there. Does the analysis and the conclusion of the analysis lead to land use code regulations? Land use regulations or actions? So that's test number one. If the analysis under that component in Bonner County doesn't appear to lead to code or actions, then we can dispense with anything under that component according to the code. So we're looking critically at that. So I'd like to have, I think that's probably the first round of discussion with all of us, is to go through the components. So it's going to take a while if we did it one sitting, because it's complex and it needs to have some serious discussion about it. Scratch your brains as hard as you can, could this lead to any land use regulation based on this component? A lot of them, as I've said before, as I've reviewed lots of complans around the country, both urban and rural, this company, the state statute, the Land Use Plan, Planning Act, came out of an urban area. It's no question. So there's a lot of things that may be only applied to an urban area. And, yeah, so especially where, at best, somebody such as one, for example, schools and school transportation. How could that end up being a land use regulation? I don't recall any subdivision or anything that said you need to provide a school lot. Transportation, you need to have, you need to make provision in your subdivision for inadequate school bus turnaround. Okay, that could be. So the comp plan would say that. Other than that, I can't see where, yeah, we're not going to restrict a subdivision from existing because there's inadequate school provisions. That's what the districts are for, and that's what levies and everything else are for. So we don't have any control over that. So it would be bound to a moratorium if that was to happen, to say, no, you can't have a subdivision or your minimum, your, yeah, your MLD, because this is not a school supply. Even as we heard tonight, oh, the school's crowded. Well, we know that, but the school districts aren't telling us to do anything about it. So I don't know that there's going to be some goals and objectives in the comp plan relative to that component. That's just one example. And there's three or four more that are questionable. But we need to go through that and make that as the first stepping stone, I think, and then move on. Either to look further at the ones that remain, which we will, and start really zeroing it in on the land use component, which is really where it all ends. But we need to do that through workshops. I can't do it by myself with staff. We're the advisors, we're the whatever, layers. So we've got to have time for the commission, and it'd be nice if we had a full commission to do it so that the load gets spread out and the thoughts get spread out.
I think we're getting close.
Okay, but do we have time? Or should we try to devote some special time, if we can, to that as long as we can get? Because they're workshops, so properly advertised, et cetera, and scheduled so that we can pretty much guarantee that we're good.
The challenge is we're moving into the holiday months. So what are you doing for November and December?
Well, the National Idaho Holiday is coming up next week, so, honey.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's about to pass by us.
What about January 6th? I mean, could we devote January 6th to that?
I was hoping we could get there earlier, but otherwise, I mean, we'd have to have a special meeting.
Yeah, the challenge is that if we, we're starting to build up files again, right? They need it here and there.
No, you have to be.
With our regular schedule, except for some, I don't know. But let's, let's, let's look at that, because you're, we're discovering that, you know, that in the planning field, that some of the things have changed around and the state, and we're getting further and further behind, which is why you're seeing these motions start to change, right?
Yeah.
Is, is, you know, we're just, we're using the same process that's been used for the last, you know, 15 years or 20 years. And so, yeah, you're going to start to see those changes. So it's helping me to ask better questions about the comp plan, so.
The comp plan itself, the original version of it was 1975, only changed minor language 10 times in that, it could be years, it could be years. So, yeah, it's in itself is quite old. Again, I, just looking at essentially California's general plan in their code, it's almost verbatim. So guess where it came from? Yeah, so, I mean, I'd love to have the Idaho's branch of APA take a look at it real hard, have a good discussion statewide about it, because I think it would generate a lot of, a lot of. And that probably hasn't happened because the comp plan is the comp plan. It's not the driver, it's the suggestor out front that you still have to check back in, but it's not code. Right now, it doesn't regulate anything, it doesn't. It just aims in a direction, but still, let's make it useful.
So the next meeting, we have how many files?
Four.
Four. Four, and then November again, there's, there's a few. I don't have to.
November 4th is the 1920.
No, I thought that was the 18.
The 18th is early.
November 10th is some of the files that we just heard today. Oh, no, that'll be OC.
Yeah, yeah, see, it's all, see, it's all a blur. Yeah.
All right.
I can pull up the agendas real quick if you want.
No, it's good, it's good. So let's, let us look at it and we'll see if we can fit in a discussion.
Would this group of four of us be at all amenable to a special meeting? Yeah, we'd have to make it, I, I don't know if I was to get it. I'm feeling, I'm feeling the pressure, maybe I put it on myself, but as we've talked, Jeff, Ryan, and I have talked about it, and a little bit with Jake too, just, we're not, we're not moving ahead, I think, as much as we could. We've got these major stepping stones to go through.
The pressure is the pressures of the man to change zoning.
Oh, it is.
That's why we need to get the comp plan addressed.
Exactly. And then, you know, through that, then, that's where I see, for instance, our dual designation land uses or zones. The comp plan can make comments about that direction. As far as I can see now, I don't want to free make anybody's mind up here, but get rid of the dual-headed designation zoning descriptions.
Yeah, and that's what most of the, that's what subrare committees request.
Right, and they've more so than they've done it with their, right, their recommendations. And, you know, again, tonight, I bought a 20 acres home. Why are you talking about 10th? It's zone 20th, you know, but they didn't read the fine print. So I was trying to make the point, it's there in the code, but nobody showed you the code, they just showed you what the zone is.
I did have one question in the back of my mind. We did not have a 20 acre zone until 2008, the comprehensive plan in 2005. Comfor 20, we did not have a 20 acre minimum. We had fives, well, fives and egg tints, and that was it. So when people are up there saying that 20 years ago, it didn't exist.
They better check their facts.
Someone said 2003.
Yeah.
Getting close.
So those 20s were likely 10s then?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Those 20s were likely 10s then?
They absolutely were.
Zoned fives.
Yeah, all we had was.
There were two sections of the 10 acre zone. There were two sections of 10 acres only in the county.
This is why I went the other way. That's one.
Over here. I guess multiple sections. Multiple sections over here, multiple sections.
It's kind of a paintbrush and a roller.
So everything else was fine.
So to give you like an update on volume, it looks like we have about 18 or so files that will be scheduled for hearing that we're working on right now. And nine of those are full variance files, so we've seen a big increase of this. We have nine, one will hear at the next hearing, then.
Setbacks and such.
A bunch of them are setbacks, yeah. So, you know, it's, we've seen a lot of administrative exceptions, administrative variance setbacks, so. But, yeah, that kind of tells you the volume of what we're looking at for the next three, four months, three months.
We're still.
And that's just what we receive as of today, right? So we don't know what's coming in tomorrow. So it doesn't look like it's slowing down.
It's typical of this time of year. Yeah, so, little lighter files. Okay, so maybe in November, would you? November 11th or something for a workshop?
On Bethune's Day, I don't think that's a good idea.
On the who? Oh, is it? Is that a holiday?
Well, it's sort of weird balls.
Might offset this one. I was just doing it, yeah.
This is 22, but it's going to give us an implication.
I was just on the fourth process.
Thinking about.
No, that's a good.
That's, right.
I don't know, I can tell you about the holidays. I got one to ask.
Right? Okay, we want that.
It is showing as all day.
So there's no.
Okay, everybody approve the calendars.
Yep, looks good.
You need to vote, Jeanie?
No, you guys just need to.
They nodded, they nodded their heads. So this meeting is continued till October 21st, 2021, 1500 Highway 2 in Bonner County, San Pointe. We'll be meeting on the third floor. We'll be meeting on the third floor. It's 8:37, which, mission accomplished, and.